Good morning and welcome to the November 1st, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Several announcements to share this morning. I would first like to invite the Election Commissioner Tabitha Lehman to talk about next week's general election.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a quick update, just to let you know that we are seeing a small but good turnout for this election. Of course, we always anticipate these elections are going to be smaller turnout. Our ballot by mail numbers are right on target for what we would expect for this election, but our early vote numbers are actually stronger than what we've seen either in '13 or in[137.31][137.31]'15 in office. So, we are excited to see those numbers are up. If you remember, '13 would be the last like election and '15 would be when the Wichita Mayor and the Marijuana Initiative question was on the ballot. So, our turnout was stronger in that election. So, we are excited to see that our early vote numbers are stronger than they were even in '15. Did want to remind everyone that Election Day is Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. If you wait to vote till Tuesday, you do need to go to your designated polling location. But our early vote centers are going to be opening up tomorrow, and so you can vote anywhere within the county as long as you're registered to vote in Sedgwick County. One change that is different this year is our ballot by mail laws did change. So, if you receive your ballot and you can drop it off at your polling place on Election Day, or you can make sure it's postmarked by Election Day, and then as long as we receive that by the Friday after the election, we are allowed by law then to count those ballots. With that change, that has added a slight wrinkle for us this year because that Friday after the election when we should open and count those ballots is Veterans Day observed. So, our courthouse, historic courthouse will be closed to the public that day. Obviously, we don't want to count ballots behind closed doors. So, what we are doing is we've set 2:00 PM on Friday as the time we will count those ballots. So, if anybody wants to be there, they just need to be at our office by 2:00 PM on Friday. We will let them in the door and they can observe those ballots be counted. However, we would just want to let you know, don't come late if you want to watch it because we don't anticipate it being a large number of ballots. So, it will go quickly. So, that is all I had to say. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, thank you, Tabitha. I don't see anyone, or Madam Commissioner.
You're fine.
Don't see anyone asking to speak, but thank you for that update.
Thanks.
A few more announcements. The next Board of County Commissioners meeting will be Wednesday, November 8th at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This will replace the regular 9:00 AM meeting. The meeting will be recorded and placed on the Sedgwick County YouTube channel. It will also be aired or rebroadcast on KPTC Channel 8 on Wednesday, November 15th at 9:00 AM. And finally, I have one more announcement. Sedgwick County has created a way for the public to provide input to Commissioners about the potential Tyson Foods project coming to Sedgwick County. Please send your thoughts to communityinput@sedgwick.gov. That's one word, communityinput@sedgwick.gov. Include your name and address, and all the feedback will be gathered and given to Commissioners and members of the project team leading the due diligence efforts. And look forward to more engagement opportunities in the future. With that Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Okay, Kate. Thank you for that introduction. Appreciate that information and update. We want to welcome everyone who's with us in the meeting room today, and all those who are watching by way of television. Appreciate your interest in county business. And I'd also want to extend a special hello to Ula West, who's our, runs our information desk. And she's at home today with an illness, and we just want to let her know that we're thinking about her today. But with those announcements, I would call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, November 1st, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Paul Bammel, East Minister Presbyterian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Mr. Commissioner, and Chairman, and all the Commissioners, thank you for having me. Allow me to open this time with a word of prayer. I'm going to be praying from an adapted prayer from Daniel, Chapter 2. Let's bow our heads and pray. Our Father, blessed be Your name forever and ever. To You belongs wisdom and might. You change the times and the seasons. You remove kings and set up kings. You remove county commissioners and set up county commissioners. You give wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. You reveal deep and hidden things. You know what is in the darkness and the light dwells with You. To You, O God of my fathers, I give thanks and praise, and I pray that You will give wisdom and might to each of our Sedgwick County Commissioners as they seek after You. I lift them up to You by name, Dave Unruh, Michael O'Donnell II, David Dennis, Richard Ranzah, Jim Howell. I ask for You to bless these men. May Your blessing remain upon these men, and may You give them great wisdom. And I also ask that You would not only bless our Commissioners, but also their families. And we also ask for Your blessing to be upon all of the staff, the wonderful people who do so much behind the scenes and are not seen in the limelight, but are so very important to this, to this county. We thank You for each of them. And we ask that You would lead them in Your ways and grant them Your favor as they make decisions. Decisions today regarding proclamations, appointments, zone changes, and other business items that they are being asked to consider today. And may Sedgwick County flourish under the leadership of these men whom You have placed and charged for this time. We pray this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Bammel, thank you for being with us this morning. Thank you. And I might say that Pastor Bammel is on the staff of the church where I worship at East Minister Presbyterian, so I'm especially blessed to have him here. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzah.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Unruh.
Present.
And next item?
Public agenda.
All right. We have several folks who signed up to speak on the public agenda today, and I might just, before we call you up, make a couple of comments. We want to, first of all, thank you all for being here today. And we welcome input on this issue that's presently a matter of interest and concern in our community. And as you know, we're going to have many different opportunities for public input as we go forward. And as Kate mentioned from the podium in her introduction, we have an opportunity for online comments too at communityinput@sedgwick.gov. So, we just are ready to go forward and hear your comments, and I think you all are aware that this is not an agenda item today. Where no decisions are going to be made at this time. We don't even have a proposal in front of us to consider. So, however, the input is welcome. We're glad you're here. And as you're at the podium, please keep in mind that we'll allow you three minutes to speak. And it might be good if folks coming up, if they're going to just say what someone else in front of them has already said, perhaps you, you may not want to take the time. But we're here to listen, and so appreciate you, appreciate you being here. And I might also say there's been one publicized meeting that was held last Saturday, and Commissioner Dennis attended that on behalf of the Commission. And so, I just want to make the point that we're, we are interested in what the public has to say on this issue. So, with that, let me call up to the podium those who have signed up. I think two folks have signed up, but they're going to be speaking on one of our proclamations today, so I won't call them up for the Tyson discussion. But first is Robin Olmer. And if you'd want to speak, and if you say your name when you get to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name's Robin Olmer. I live in southeast Wichita, ZIP Code 67207. I'm retired Air Force and retired from the Mulvane School District under CAPERS. I'm here this morning to tell you I don't think Tyson Slaughterhouse or the 300 Chicken Houses is a good fit for Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County just doesn't have the workers to fill these 1,600 jobs. Tyson usually brings in immigrant workers typically from Guatemala, Mexico, and Somalia. These people, we need housing right away. Schools would need to be increased, we increase their capacity. We don't have the infrastructure to support Tyson's needs for huge amounts of water. We would need to increase our sewer treatment plant capacity. The large trucks coming and going to the chicken houses would tear up our roads. Healthcare facilities would need to handle these poor and uninsured patients who work in Tyson's very dangerous and polluted facilities. Tyson has a history of polluting air and water in the areas around their slaughterhouses and chicken houses. We don't need that here. According to the Wall Street Journal, Wichita is the air capital of the world, yet we can't supply enough skilled labor for the good paying jobs right here in Wichita. We have less than 5% unemployment rate. That's fantastic, but we have workers leaving Kansas for states that have better schools, expanded Medicaid, cheaper healthcare, better paying jobs. We have companies with good jobs leaving Kansas because they can't find workers. I think we'd be better off spending taxpayer money on technical and trade schools, universities, and junior colleges, and K-12 education, not on incentives to bring a slaughterhouse here that pays poverty wages and has a high turnover rate, not on the, not, and, not on the infrastructures to support that. Tyson would burden our water supply sewer system, roads, schools, and healthcare facilities at a time when the Kansas budget has made devastating cuts in these areas. Tyson would expect an 80% tax abatement for 10 years and beyond that, possibly like they did in Leavenworth County. They would want our county to sell municipal bonds at $500 million to build their plant. So, Tyson gets a big tax break, needs a huge taxpayer investment from us to upgrade infrastructure for them, and they will only pay most of their workers wages below the poverty line. Their workers will be injured and sick frequently and won't have healthcare. Their families will qualify for food stamps, leap programs, free and reduced lunches, low income housing. Their employees would not make enough to buy a home and pay back taxpayer dollars. We will not see a return on our investment with Tyson. I don't want my taxes going up to support this, going up to support this company. When I moved here in 1989 and since the-
Ma'am, excuse me for interrupting, but your three minutes are up. Can you kind of wrap it up?
Last paragraph. It's a short one. I was amazed to see Boeing Learjet Bombardier, Beech, Raytheon, Cessna, and Spirit, to name a few. We're the air capital of the world, yet we're not trading our young people to work in these skilled jobs. We're not finding ways to help high wage businesses stay here. A slaughterhouse, no, it doesn't fit. Let Tyson go to a town who needs employment and wants the burden to keep their towns alive. We don't need it. We can do better.
Thank you for your comments. The next person who signed up was Ann Burns.
Jane.
Do you make the name Jane first?
Well, I'm sorry. It is Jane. I'm sorry. And I know you. We've met.
In fact, I'm one of your constituents, although I've visited with other county Commissioners, and I admire those I've visited with. Thank you so much for permitting me to input on the topic of the future. Not only am I a dietitian, interested in the health and nutrition of, of all of us and my clients, but also I teach therapeutic nutrition at the college level. I'd like to input positively that clean water is most important to our population here in Sedgwick County and downstream, including the Gulf of Mexico. Animal protein waste pollutes water. In fact, because I teach therapeutic nutrition, I want to emphasize that as a nation, we get plenty of animal protein and animal fat, that saturated fat. We don't need more. What we need in Sedgwick County throughout Kansas and throughout the United States is more plant-based food. We don't get enough fruits and vegetables, and I'd like to take this opportunity to ask you to support fresh food here in Sedgwick County. Thank you so much for your attention. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jane. Thank you for your-
Thank you.
Next person asking to speak is Tammy Sheridan.
My name is Tammy Sheridan. I live at 12340 West 34th Court, South Wichita, 67227. And it's in regards to your new business. Do you want me to comment now or once that's presented? It's on item F under new business. Do you want that now or once that's been presented to you on the agenda?
Well, no. If, it's up, it's up to you. If you'd like to make your comments now, you may, or if you want to speak on that issue, we'll allow comments at that time.
I would like to speak once it's been presented, if possible.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Next person, Janice Bradley.
My name is Janice Bradley. I live at 214 Buckridge in rural midtown Wichita. And what I would like to speak to on the chicken complex is the, the farmers that go under contract with Tyson, and we have been, we have started, begun studying this. And they are going to require something like at least 70 farmers, contract farmers, each of which has four to six barns, holding 29,000, 30,000 chickens apiece. These chickens are raised for a seven-week growing cycle. The litter is kept by the farmer. And speaking of this litter, I mean, for seven weeks, we're going to have smells in these areas, dust, and like Jane said, increasing pollution of our waterways. The agricultural runoff is responsible for dead zones in the Gulf. And this is from our, the kind of agriculture that's going on in this country. And we have had, you know, somewhat, something of a movement towards local and organic production, smaller farmers, and this is going the opposite direction of that. This is huge corporate farming. If, and it's going to change the whole landscape of the area that it comes into. Imagine 300 huge chicken barns dotted all over the landscape. And the other thing is, these farmers have to go into pretty serious debt to build these structures. They are what Tyson calls, they want premium structures with computer-controlled ventilation systems, which they need. They don't have windows. The chickens never go outside, and they're locked inside, sometimes in blazing heat where they have die-offs if it gets too hot. But under these expensive and premium air conditioning units, anyway, it's a huge investment for the farmer and not easy to, I mean, if, yeah, you say, oh, there's a 90-day period you can get out of the contract. How are you going to do that after this huge investment of money? They have to take out loans. And so, they're going to be underwater if they do that. Anyway, it's not a good deal for the small farmers. That's what we're concerned about. Please join our Facebook group. We have a group called No Tyson, Sedgwick County, and we'd like your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Anderson.
Hi, my name is Bill Anderson. I'm in District 4. There you are. And I live at 1227 Jefferson. I'm interested in you guys really paying attention to the externalities. Those are the indirect costs that we're going to have to pay in terms of water, in terms of increased use of public resources, many other things that these kinds of projects, when it's being sold, do not include. These are the real costs that that kind of, that this kind of operation will drop onto the county. You guys are going to have to be dealing with water issues if this happens. You guys are going to have to be dealing with people complaining about noise, increased traffic as the trucks are coming, bringing the chickens, taking them, taking them away. Problems with worker, workers being injured. This is a very dangerous operation, very dangerous jobs. A lot of repetition, so you get things like carpal, things like that. People don't keep these jobs, or at least we, we learned on Saturday, people don't keep these jobs very long. They're just too demanding physically, the workers and the plants. The people who are supplying the chickens, that's a whole different issue. Their, their problems with Tyson are different, but they definitely have problems. I was glad to see Mr. Dennis and the gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
Mike Scholes.
Okay. And they were both at that Saturday meeting. For me, that was really instructive. Those two speakers, Chris Peterson, I believe his name was, the hog farmer from Iowa, made a hell of a case, a very, very strong case about just, as Janice said, this is going in the wrong direction, the wrong direction. So, I really want, I hope you guys, particularly my Commissioner, Mr. Ranzah, would really give this some serious consideration. It's not just about jobs. It's about the externalities of those jobs. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And another speaker on the Tyson issue is Mr. Ta, or is Tom Neal.
My name is Tom Neal, K-N-E-I-L. I live at 6110 Edinburgh in Bel Air. Some of you, well, at least one of you, Commissioner Unruh, may recall my being here a number of years ago to speak on behalf of the Arkansas River Coalition, asking for your support of the boat passage when the Lincoln Street Dam was being reconstructed. My concern is the water in the river for recreation, as well as just general positive amenity, attracting people to come to the city and county area. My concern is that, that we are in a, not exactly a water pour, but a precarious position with groundwater, as you well know. In areas, in times of drought, we sometimes struggle to get enough water for the, the That impacts what happens on, on the river for amenity or for recreation. It impacts the appearance of the river area, which we're trying to make attractive, and the surface water, the, the surface water in good part is supported by the groundwater. If the groundwater falls, groundwater level falls, the surface water falls also. It's, it's, they are tied, even though they're in two different levels. Whatever the decision is to bring or not to bring, well, not, not on the second part, but whatever the decision is as to where this plant might go, whether it's north of Wichita or south of Wichita, I don't know what that will be, as I suspect you don't either, but I ask you to think in terms of protecting the water in the river for recreation, for personal contact, for the River Festival, other activities that are centered around the river. Protect it. Make sure that whatever happens, that it is going to be protected from pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this particular issue. Is there anyone who came in late who wants to speak? Yes, sir, will. If you want to step to the podium, say your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Doug Ballard, and I live at 920 North Buffam, St. Riverside. I don't have anything prepared for this, that you certainly couldn't do it in three minutes, but as an activist, one of the things that I'm most interested in and have been for a long time is water and all of the things that go with this. So, I've recently been touring some of the city's facilities, and they are somewhat challenged anyway because it's hard to see those things, and most citizens don't know what goes through, what the city goes through to process water, to get it to where it needs to be used, to bring it up to drinking water, and then we use it for whatever we use it for, washing our cars, or drinking, or whatever. But we bring it to that highest standard and strictly based on all of the things that I have been studying in the last several years, mostly surrounded around water, to take somebody that is going to use that much water and then do what they do with it, which we also have to process. That plus a company that, as an activist, I don't think I can remember any company that has more violations between the FDA, EPA, and the ocean, and all of the other regulatory concerns that have to do with that industry. I just don't think this, of course, we'd love to have 1,500 jobs, but I'm just not sure it's going to be a good investment for the city of Wichita and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there others who, anyone else who wants to speak that didn't sign up? All right. Then the other folks who signed up on specific agenda items, we will allow you to speak at that time. And I would just remind you all that there is opportunity for continued public input at our website, communityinput@sedgwick.gov. And would also pledge to you that the Commissioners are all going to keep an open mind on this issue so that when, when and if a proposal comes, we, we'll have, we'll have all the information we need to make a decision. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you want to? Okay. All right. With that, with that being said, I believe we will go on to the next agenda item and we'll close this public agenda portion of the agenda. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 4th, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes from October 4th and October 11th.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh. Chairman Unruh?
Aye. And next item?
Proclamation. Item C, Proclamation declaring Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week.
All right, Commissioners, we have a proclamation for your consideration, and I've asked Commissioner Dennis, retired Colonel Dennis, to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Junior ROTC was officially implemented in American high schools in 1916, began in Kansas in 1917, and in Wichita in 1994. And whereas cadet leadership programs were started in selected middle schools in 1997, making Wichita leader in the nation in this initiative. And whereas the Junior ROTC and leadership programs are recognized in Wichita for building citizenship and good character in our youth. And whereas there are now more than 2,300 youth participating as cadets in 18 of our public high schools, now therefore be it resolved that David M. Unruh, Chairman of the Cedric County Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim November 5th to 11th, 2017, as Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week, in recognition of these fine young men and women who are becoming leaders and citizens of the future through their involvement in Junior ROTC and leadership programs, dated November 1st, 2017. I move that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. And we have the folks from the ROTC leadership here to accept the proclamation, and receiving it is Cadet Colonel Jeremy Toll.
Good morning, County Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Colonel Jeremy Toll. I am the Wichita Public School Jared-Corps Commander. On behalf of the eight high school Jared-Corps programs, and the 10 middle school leadership programs, and the 2,423 enrolled cadets, my Corps staff and I are proudly and honorably accepting the special County Commission, or Cedric County Commission proclamation established November 6th through November 12th as the Wichita Jared-Corps Leadership Week. You should know that the cadets in our Corps value hard work, and they challenge themselves to better their community, their schools, and their peer around them, their peers around them. This is evident because of the 11,000 hours of community service they performed over the past year. As you all are aware, the Jared-Corps program was established in Wichita in 1994, and since then, the cadets have continued to proudly demonstrate strong leadership and citizenship by conducting a multitude of patriotic ceremonies in honoring our military veterans, namely the Veterans Day Ceremony at Century 2 on November 8th, and the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. This tribute demonstrates the gratitude we Americans have for those who serve in order to protect our nation's freedoms and liberties. Particularly noteworthy, the Veterans Day Ceremony includes an impressive massive formation in the entire Cadet Corps, a highly presented color guard by the schools Wichita Leadership and Jared-Corps programs, an uplifting rendition of the National Anthem and the Patriot songs by Southeast High School Band in the magical assemblies, a motivational speech by a guest feature, Colonel Joshua Olson, Commander, 22nd Air Refilling Wing of the McConnell Air Force Base, in a passing review of the cadets showcasing their pride and spirit. We hope you will join us for the special ceremony. In closing, thank you so much for honoring the Wichita Public School Jared-Corps Leadership Program, providing us with the opportunity to be honored by the powerful proclamation, and I hope to see you next week, on Wednesday. Whoa.
I was going to say, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but thank you for being here today, and we do plan to attend the ceremony next week. As a matter of fact, the first time in my recollection that we have delayed our County Commission meeting and moved to the afternoon so that we can be in attendance and celebrate with you and recognize all those young people involved in JROTC. But would you please ask your other leadership team to step to the podium and say their name, so that we can see who's here?
I'll do so, and thank you very much for attending that. I appreciate that greatly. Okay. Can Dominic Harris, my, or my Corps XO, just going to step to the podium now?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Dominic Harris. I am our Corps Deputy Commander for USD 259 Public Schools, and I would just like to introduce myself as, my primary job within our Corps is I work with the middle school level with the leadership programs. Just to give some background, what we do on that part is, just recently, in early October, cadets Daniel Turner and Ryan Trail, they went and helped with their leadership camp that they have that one day, and basically that, they helped with the rope bridging and helping them with that, and then also as well, their recent drill meets that they have, we come and we attend those, and we actually help judge those and score them as they would in the high school level. And then also, just some background, for my school Southeast, just to give you guys on our service learning project, every school has one for their Jared-Corps programs in the high school level, and ours is recycling. And just to give some background and some just excitement for me, this past year from our recordings, we accumulated 40,000-plus of recycled items, and it was a great amount for us this year. It's the most we've actually recycled through the years I've been in Jared-Corps at Southeast. Overall, this program for me has been a great program. I enjoyed it a lot for the years I've been in it, and I would like to introduce our CSM,
Good morning, Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, and attendants. I'm the Corps Command Sergeant Major CJ Brown. I go to Northwest High School. I've been in the program since my sixth grade year. I'm a drill team commander over at Northwest, and my main job for the Corps is I'm in charge of all the color guards. And one thing that I would like to hit is, one thing we have seen improve is that cadets have been more motivated to go out and do more things, such as color guards, and more of the volunteer opportunities for the Corps, and they've gotten a lot more involved in the community, which is a real big part of our main mission for Jared-Corps and leadership, is we want them to get out there and help the community and help get better, to improve on it. I do appreciate the Jared-Corps Week, that really, I think that's going to help boost our cadet morale and really show them that people are noticing what we're doing for Jared-Corps and leadership programs. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more cadet here. Would you like to step to the podium and introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is JD Lewis, and the main reason I'm here today is to give Dominic Harris a ride. There was a joke, I am also known as the Bodyguard for this whole, well, Dominic at least, I don't know about the other, I think they can handle themselves. Yeah. I'm at Southeast High School with Dominic Harris, I'm just a company commander, so I'm in the battalion leadership, so what these guys do, they actually do put it down through the ranks, and I get their orders, and I fill them out through my company, and it's actually pretty cool. I've been in it since freshman year, and I didn't think I'd get this far, but I did. So it's kind of cool to see progression through, through the leaders down through the ranks.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I'd just once again like to thank the County Commissioners for the proclamation. It's extremely grateful, and we are honored that you would give us a week to contribute to Jared-Corps and Leadership Program. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment here from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Colonel Kennedy and all of the cadets that came and joined today. We are deeply honored that you're here. We're deeply honored that you are recognizing our veterans on November 8th. If you see this bench on my left, we have a veteran of the Iraqi war. On the far end of the bench, we have a veteran of the United States Air Force, we have a Brigadier General sitting down in front of you. We have a number of folks that have served, and we want to thank you very much for recognizing the men and women that have sacrificed so much for our country. We look forward to joining you on November 8th, and also we're going to participate in the parade on November 11th. All five of the Commissioners and the County Manager are going to be in the parade on the 11th, so we are looking forward to that. But just a couple of words about JROTC. JROTC is one of the programs that connects students to the schools, and as a result of that, their grades are higher. We've got statistics that, it's proven fact that the grades are higher on average for our JROTC cadets than they are for the general population of the school. Their graduation rates are higher, they're pretty well more physically fit than the rest of our students that we've got in the school. So it pays great dividends to be a member of the JROTC, and as a veteran myself, I want to thank you very much for what you're doing, and I especially want to thank you for putting on the formal parade on Wednesday and the Veterans Day Parade on Saturday. Thank you very much for being here today, and that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend you all for, I guess, being engaged in the Junior ROTC. I know that this is an organization that does service to the community, you support each other as a family, there's discipline. Colonel Kennedy, thank you for your service as well. There's discipline that is taught, and I think that's just really a very positive thing overall for these young men, and by the way, young ladies, that are parts of, members of the Junior ROTC. I recently got to participate in a competition where they had to answer questions about government and political things, and I don't remember how many of the young people came and competed on that, but it was very, very difficult to judge, because these were very, very smart, intelligent young people that knew their stuff, and I was just impressed in every way. So since 1994, this has been growing and growing, I'm not sure how much bigger it can get, but I'm extremely impressed. I'm a little bit jealous because back when I was in Southeast High School, thank you for your mention, your schools as well, but we didn't have anything, anything like this back, back in the day. And I was a floundering teenager, didn't have any direction in my life, I needed some discipline, and it would have been really good for me to do that. And I ended up joining the Air Force. I was one of the best things I've ever done. I know many of the, of the members actually do go on to serve in the military, and I think this is a great segue for them to do that potentially. But I remember that when I joined the Air Force, I went in with no insignia, they called me a slick sleeve. I didn't have anything on my sleeves at all, I had the most plain uniform you could have. So I look at you guys today, and your uniforms look fantastic, they call that fruit salad, the ribbons that you have, the medals that you're wearing, the uniform is very important, customs and courtesy is very important, respect, patriotism, service, you guys have it all. I'm just extremely impressed. My colleague's Colonel David Dennis, I'm sure he had a uniform very similar to that, only his was from active service, active duty service in the Air Force. Commissioner Renzo probably had something like that, and certainly General Scholes had a uniform that had a fruit salad. I didn't have much, so I'm quite jealous today. I tried my best, but I didn't get, you guys have much better uniforms than I ever had. Anyway, I just want to say thank you for your service to the community. I'm extremely impressed, proud of you all. Thank you Colonel Kennedy for all you do. Please continue to grow the organization, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see no other comments, so once again, appreciate you all being here, and I will second, you all look, you all look sharp, looking good, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Proclamation declaring Neighborhood University Empowering Neighborhoods Today.
Commissioners, I have, excuse me, a proclamation for your consideration. Whereas Wichita Independent Neighborhoods WIN started with a few neighborhoods in 1993 and currently covers almost half of Wichita households and over 60 neighborhood associations. And whereas WIN has established a Neighborhood University program as an educational forum to bring together leaders, businesses, city, and county representatives to share and discuss ideas to find solutions for neighborhood problems, improve conditions, and overall quality of community life. And whereas Neighborhood University promotes team effort and offers learning experiences that will lead to success for individuals and organizations, and instill values of caring and consideration for all neighborhoods. And whereas 2017 Neighborhood University continues WIN's vision to ensure an informed, empowered, and healthy living environment for the citizens of Cedric County. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David Unruh, Chairman of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 4th, 2017, as Neighborhood University Empowering Neighborhoods Day in Cedric County, and recognize the efforts of WIN and its partners by supporting the citizens in making Cedric County the best place to live, and encourage citizens to attend the Neighborhood University Empowering Neighborhoods event on November 4th, 2017. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, what's the will of the Board? Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion and second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. And accepting the proclamation today is Mr. James Roseborough, and Janet Wilson, I think, is also here to help receive that.
Chairman Unruh, members of the County Commission. I'm James Roseborough, President of the Neighborhood, of the WIN, the Wichita Independent Neighborhoods, I almost say the Northeast Tights Neighborhood. I just want to thank you for your support of this 15th anniversary of our Neighborhood University. And we do a lot. I've worked with a lot of you up there before on different things, and I'm going to say this before I turn this over to Janet and Dr. Lee, is the mere fact that we value quality of life issues in the neighborhoods. I noticed the group that spoke before us left, but that's what WIN is about. When we first started to organize in 1990, that's a long time ago, we want to speak as one voice for all the people in Cedric County, the city of Wichita, and the surrounding area. And we have accomplished that over the years, and we have done that through the Neighborhood University, one of the ways, and I will let Janet and Dr. Lee talk about that, but thank you very much for the proclamation.
Good morning. Thank you for your proclamation. Good morning, Commissioner Unruh, Chairman Unruh, and Commissioners and Board guests. We have a dynamic speaker that is going to speak, Dr. Charlotte Smith, out of University of Kansas Med School, and what she's going to talk about is the importance of neighborhoods and a neighborhood association. She was in Katrina, and 12 years later, she wants to talk about how neighborhood associations affect quality of life, health, mental health, as well as social health, and also why some neighborhoods are not being rebuilt in New Orleans, because there was never a neighborhood association to begin with. And so as they progressed, when FEMA came in, FEMA directed all of their funding toward neighborhood associations. So if you didn't have a neighborhood association, you didn't get any funding, and that's why New Orleans, the way it is now, is not thoroughly built back like it was. And then we have for lunch, our speaker and Dr. Carla Lee will speak on him.
Also, good morning, and thank you for the proclamation, Chairman Unruh and Commissioners. We've got an exciting program this year. The luncheon speaker, Mr. Dan Prater from Drury University in Missouri, is a Wichitaan who is now in Missouri. He formed a not-profit center and is its Executive Director. He works on infrastructure training of boards, so we're really looking forward to his presentation, and I've shared with him the five Cs that are some of what I teach over the years, communication, collaboration, commitment, collegiality throughout whatever one does. And he also has agreed to do a spin-out workshop. We have 15 speakers for 15 workshops, plus training on fire safety, and we will close out with a panel. Jim Howell is serving on our panel in the afternoon, and we'll capstone, do a synopsis on each of And we'll capstone, do a synopsis on each of the tracks from those spin-outs. So we are hoping that out of that, we'll come back to the large audience what happened in those spin-outs. Levana Williams will also be doing our final remarks on behalf of the city. So we're very grateful for the participation of the county in this coming up. And we're hoping in the end that Dan Prater, for example, may contract with neighborhoods across the county and the city. His lectures are on strengthening boards. He goes over conflicts of interest, all the IRS rules, functions of officers for the boards. So it's the first time we brought in this kind of a speaker, so we're hoping people might come, if only for the luncheon, to hear his presentation. Thank you again very much for your proclamation. We look forward to exciting day.
Dr. Lee, thank you. And we do have a comment here from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, Dr. Lee, if you'd be willing to tell us where this is going to occur or the university will be. If someone's interested in attending, how can they do that? How can they find that information? Is there a cost? Can you please?
The cost is $25. That includes a continental breakfast, a luncheon, and all the breaks and all the workshops ahead of time. So if you can call our office to 608-000 for Janet or call myself, 213-7865, we'll be glad to acknowledge your $25 ahead of time. At the door is 35. And that also includes all of our exhibits. So you could contact us or the WIN office for that.
And the other question was, where will the event be?
We are at the, yeah, South Fire Training Station, 4700 31st Street South.
We're at the fire training station. We will be two blocks west of Oliver on 31st Street at the fire training station where the tower is, right behind Plainview Park. We go from 8:00 to 3:00. It's an all-day affair, but it's very well worth your time. Thank you.
I did drop off save the date cards here for each commissioner. I don't know if you received them or not, but it did have the location and the times of the university on it. And also, I just want to say, I do have tickets here this morning that's ready to be picked up if you are, if you're interested. So appreciate it. And I'll stand for any questions that may be for me.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments as well.
All right.
I'll say, number one, thank you for doing this. It's a great organization. It's a growing organization, 60 neighborhoods now. It's impressive. I've been involved in WIN as much as I have had time and opportunity, but every time I go and experience anything that WIN puts on, it's always a great event and great people. And so I appreciate the grassroots effort to educate and make your neighborhoods better and safer, a community coming together to help each other, to help solve problems, make your community safer. And it's just really very, very impressive. And some of the points I wanted to highlight on this schedule, I'm involved in what's called an Area Circles Group, basically trying to help people find ways out of poverty. I'm actually personally involved in that. But you guys have a breakout session on there. It's called Bridges of Poverty, taught by Danny Johnson. There is a segment by former Commissioner Carl Peter John. There's a homeless outreach team has a section. There's an area on transportation. There is comments by, again, President Roseborough, which I think is going to be great, looking forward to that, as well as Vice Mayor Janet Miller and closing remarks by Levante Williams. And of course, I have a session on a panel. My part will be a summary of civic engagement with government agencies. So it's a great plan for the day. I'm looking forward to being a part of that. I want to say thank you for your leadership in bringing the WIN organization together and continuing to lead, help it grow, and do what it does. It's very impressive. I want to say thank you for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for sharing our tracks. We do tracks and I appreciate what Mr. Howell is sharing. We try to use different themes each year. And this year, we pick structural items. The first track is education with speakers in it. The second track is health and safety with speakers in it. Citizenship and community engagement, finance, culture, and then we do train for fire and safety and first aid. So thanks for picking out who they were. And we have tried to use workshop themes throughout our times of Neighborhood Universities. So appreciate seeing that, Mr. Howell. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here and much success on your event as it comes up. I think we're ready for the next item.
Appointments. Item E, Resolution Appointing Suzanne Welshans to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in the Citizens Organization Position.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item E is a resolution appointing Ms. Welshans to the Solid Waste Management Committee in the Citizens Organization Position. This would fill the vacancy left when Ms. Bishop, Ms. Elizabeth Bishop, her term expired. Ms. Welshans' term would expire December 31st of 2018. And I don't know that she's present to be sworn, but I would urge adoption of the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. What's the will of the board?
Move that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. And I don't think Ms. Welshans is here, so she will be sworn at appropriate time. Next item, please.
New Business. Item F, Zone Change From SF20 Single Family To Limited Commercial Generally Located On The Northwest Corner Of 119th Street West And 31st Street South.
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. Commissioners, this is a 5.7 acre site there where the arrow is pointing, located in the northwest corner, as indicated previously. The applicant owns not only the application area, but also owns the land to the north and west as well. Limited commercial zoning would expand the range of permitted uses that would be currently allowed on the property. The property is currently zoned SF20, single-family 20, which means that basically that you can have single-family homes on half-acre lots and a few other kind of institutional and civic uses like churches and parks. And so the existing land use is essentially limited single-family homes. They propose, the proposed rezoning to limited commercial would expand the range of uses to not only include single-family residences, it would also allow a broad range of office and commercial uses as well. As you can see here, the property to the north, to the west, and to the south is also zoned SF20. The property here to the northeast is zoned limited industrial and has a conditional use for soil mining. The soil mining conditional use is good for five years from the time the property was platted. I'm not sure how much time is left on it, but I do know that they do have the ability to do soil mining for up to five years from the time it was platted, plus all the limited industrial uses. The property down to the southeast, this kind of purple color, is industrial park. And it also has a protective overlay on it. The industrial park district is more restrictive than the limited industrial district. If you think of high, low, or high, medium, and low district, the industrial park would be the lowest intensity industrial. The limited industrial would be medium. And then we have general industrial, which would be the highest. I did check to see how many people were notified because there are large ownerships here. And I believe there were seven people that were on the official notification list. You can see, this is a rural area. It's still primarily used for agricultural activities with a few scattered farm sites or home sites. Down here, further south, about 1,300 feet, is a subdivision of single-family homes. The homes here and here are under separate ownership from this property and the application area. And you can see that the Comprehensy Plan suggests that this is appropriate for new And there's an aerial that gives a kind of a cattywampus view. That's the application area. North is kind of here to the left. Planning Commission did review this and approved it 12 to 0, subject to a protective overlay that requires Planning Commission approval of a development plan that details permitted uses, maximum gross floor area, building height, setbacks, parking, et cetera, things that you would normally see in a community unit plan. Community unit plan is a overlay district that typically is required by code that if you have six acres or more of land under unified ownership and you're asking for a limited commercial or general commercial zoning, you're required to submit that community unit plan with the zone change. This property was submitted at 5.7 acres, so the code did not require them to submit that additional document. However, Planning Commission felt it was appropriate that at the time, that before they can get building permits, that such a document be submitted and reviewed by the Planning Commission. So that was one of the conditions. The second condition was that no building permits be issued for non-residential uses until the site is served with sewer, water, and other typical utilities. As best I could tell yesterday, the closest, let me go back here. The closest sewer and water services are approximately 3,500 feet to the northeast. They're off the site here is a subdivision over in this direction, and there's sewer and water over there, but otherwise, this area is not served by municipal services at this point. There is, there was no official protest submitted. I understand at the Commissioner Dennis's cab meeting, there were six or eight people that spoke and had concerns about encroachment of non-residential uses into what, in their view, is a residential area, and had concerns about traffic and other types of impacts that would be generated by limited commercial use. There was also concern that the applicant did not specify with any greater detail in terms of the amount of commercial activity, the types, those sorts of things like you would normally find with a community unit plan or a specified protective overlay. So with that, I try and answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several questions for you, Dale. First of all, is the applicant or agent here today?
I do not see the agent anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, as far as CUP, it's normally, and you've always stated this, but I want to make sure that it's clear, that a community unit plan would be required if they were going six acres on this, but they decided to go 5.7. And they own all the other properties surrounding this. Is that not correct?
According to the appraiser's information, they do own this remaining land to the north and west of the application area.
So it looks like, just from the surface, that maybe they're trying to preclude us reviewing a community unit plan prior to getting this zoning. That's just an observation. Let me ask you a couple of questions about if we approve this limited commercial, could a cemetery be put there?
A cemetery?
I have the zoning codes.
Yeah. Can it?
Yes.
I guess I hadn't thought about that one.
Could a correctional placement facility be placed there?
The correctional placement facilities, if they're located, I believe, within 750 feet of residential zoning, requires a conditional use.
It does, requires some conditional use, but it could be put there.
Yes, with additional.
Subject to some other restrictions, could recycling station, public or private, be put there?
Yes.
Subject to some other regulations, could construction, sales, and service be placed there?
In limited commercial, I don't think so, because that's outside storage. Can it? Okay.
Could a nightclub in the county be placed there, subject to some restrictions?
Yes, yes.
Could a sexually oriented business in the county be placed there, subject to some restrictions?
Yes.
Could a tavern or drinking establishment be placed there, subject to some restrictions?
Yes.
Vehicle repair?
That's allowed by right in LC, yes.
Asphalt concrete plant?
Certainly, if they meet the criteria, that could be allowed by right for a limited, yes.
So there's a whole lot of things that could be placed in this that we don't have any control over because we don't know. Normally, you do a CUP, and we limit those things by having this protective overlay of CUP. Isn't that not correct?
That's correct. There's typically a list of uses that most people voluntarily eliminate just to avoid having to deal with whether they're possible or not.
But in this case, why the applicant or agent is asking just for a blank check to do, to rezone 5.7 acres, limited commercial? It gives me some pause to think about this a little bit. Who in planning would approve this once they submit the protective overlay?
If it's approved as recommended by Planning Commission, it would go to the full Planning Commission for their review and approval.
But would it come back to us?
Not the way it's worded now.
Okay, so if we vote on this and vote in favor of it today, why we have no control over any of these different things that I just read through?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that causes me some pause also. I wish the applicant or agent would have been here today because I would have some questions for them. I will have some recommendations here later on, but there may be some other questions. And I know that there's at least one person who wants to speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions directly of Mr. Miller? I don't see any, so this is not a public hearing, but we will allow a comment on zone change, so. And Ms. Sheridan has indicated she'd like to speak.
Good morning again. For the record, my name again is Tammy Sheridan. I live at 12340 West 34th Court, Wichita, Kansas, 67227. I'm in part of Redmond Estate subdivision. I wanted to start off with, gosh, through several things today. The theme, it seems like, has been quality of life and making our neighborhoods better. And I don't think that this falls into that same theme. I've been to both municipal zoning and also to the county meeting previous to this, sharing my opinion that I think that this should not be rezoned. One thing, if you look at the pictures, when you look at the views from the east, or I'm sorry, the south and the west, I think a lot of the pictures on this zoning information that was given at meetings has been somewhat deceiving. And even when it said, it said it's a rural area. When you look at this, yes, it looks like nobody lives there. I live, when you look at the map, one field away, but I'm not in the required zone to be notified. We had a little sign on 119th that I had to pull over onto 31st Street so I didn't get hit, so I could take a picture to get the phone number to find out what's going on with land. And that's the only way we knew about it. And Redmond Estates, the picture that they also took at the initial zoning meetings was approximately five years old from the air. And there are about, I don't know, 15 maybe houses in there. At this point, there's almost 50 houses in Redmond Estates. All lots have been sold. There's two lots that haven't been built on but are getting ready to be. So every single lot in that neighborhood has been sold. Those houses range in from the $300,000 to $400,000 range. They're on one-acre lots. Lots of children are in there. My concern with this is I, on 34th Court, I look directly at that 5.7 acres from my backyard. And so I have one field in between us. Moving in there, I realize that wheat field will not always be there. If it could, I would buy the whole thing and have them plant wheat for the rest of my life, but realize that that's not going to be possible. But we also know those are single-family households, and since there's no water or sewer out there, that they would have to be pretty much like and kind at one-acre lots at this point. And so there's some control as to what's coming in and going in there. Most of us did not move there so that we could have businesses built next to us. Most of us moved out of city limits so that you could have a little bit more of that country feel. Our concern is lights that would be put up, watching parking lots, not knowing what's going in there. The other two concerns that I had is if you notice, it's on the corner of 31st Street and 119th. To me, it's the foothold to put an entrance to something. It's the way that you're going to get to the rest of the property. There's no other easy access way because 31st Street is a gravel road, so that's the entrance off 119th. And it feels like it's just a way to get in there, but a way to get around also what's going to be put in there. If it's just a blank zoning change, we don't. If it's just a blank zoning change, we don't have a voice at that point, and so I wanted to make sure that the county commissioners heard that there are people, and we want to have a voice in what goes in there, and we want to make sure we still maintain that quality of life that we have. The last concern that we have is, we are part of Goddard School District. One of the things we're missing on the south side is a mid-level subdivision developments in that $200,000, $250,000 range. Quite a few of our constituents within the district, when they hit that middle school level or looking for that next house to move up to, have to bump to the north side, and so they leave the south side. And if you've listened to the news, and maybe you aren't into the high school stuff going on, Goddard just moved to a 4A school versus 5A school for next year. Eisenhower will stay at 5A. Part of that is because people have to move to the other side of Kellogg, because there's no place for them to move. We're currently having a trend of more houses moving south. If you look at Southern Ridge, Southwest Passage, we have houses moving that direction, so there is a trend of it, but we need to have that space available to build those mid-level houses. My concern is if we keep putting industrial or light commercial, you're going to persuade people not to do that. The commercial to the purple area, unfortunately, that happened right as we were moving in, and that sign was about 12 by 12 on a telephone pole nailed on there, and by the time I saw it, it was a done deal. So unfortunately, it's not a very easy way for constituents to find out what's going on when you're driving down 119th at 60 miles an hour to read, like, a piece of paper. So we just want to make sure that we are heard through this process. If it is passed, we want to make sure that we still have a voice before something is placed on that property.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any questions from commissioners, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, too.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other comments? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as I said before, I wish that applicant or agent would have been here, because I'd like to see if they'd just agree to what I'd like to recommend, but I think that there are too many unknowns, and I would certainly like this commission to have the opportunity to weigh in on whatever kind of protective overlay or restrictions are placed on this property, because if we approve it now, everything that I read earlier is approved. Then later on, they can come back and get, file whatever kind of protective overlay they want, and it gets approved below us, and we never see it again. The homeowners never see it again. It just kind of happens. So I'd like to make a motion that we take the recommended action, but we add the conditions that any future development plan on this property would have to be reviewed and approved by the governing body, and that proper notification be given to the homeowners in the area before the MAPC and before the Board of County Commissioners meets.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're ready for discussion. I would, I guess my question would be, Dale, if they had, they could have voluntarily offered a CUP for this property?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that helps me in my thinking. Commissioner Ranzau?
Okay, so if, right now, the code says that less than six acres, you don't need a CUP, right?
Correct.
If something, a specific project is going to go in, it goes to the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, only when you say project-
Well, I mean-
Really, it's a zone change, and all the uses that are permitted in that district are allowed unless they're eliminated by a protective overlay, so with that caveat.
Well, I thought you said earlier, when they decide to build something-
In this particular case, what Plan Commission approved was, they approved limited commercial zoning, but a development plan that provides pretty much the same thing as the CUP has to be provided for Plan Commission review before they can get building permits.
Okay.
But they're not required to submit a reduced list of uses.
Okay.
They could just say all LC uses and submit that and say that's what we want.
And that'll be reviewed by the commission?
Yes.
Can people speak then, or no?
Well, the motion they had didn't require any notification to the neighbors. This is after the fact, the zoning would have been approved. It's just essentially a site plan review.
A site, okay, which is above and beyond what currently is required?
For those properties under six acres, yes.
Okay, so, but under six acres, you don't need to, but they already have more requirements put on to them than what they would normally need?
Yes, the development plan is an additional requirement from just a plan. Here's LC zoning, you don't have to do anything else except plot.
Okay. Well, I guess my concern is, we have a zoning code out there to give property owners certainty on what they can do with their property and their property rights, and now we want to kind of change it. We've already added some restrictions. Normally, we wouldn't, they wouldn't come back to us for review. I'm not necessarily inclined to want to have to micromanage that or second-guess that. I mean, otherwise, well, what's the, I mean, if you're a property owner and you have this code, and we're not going to follow and allow people to do it, then perhaps we need to change what's allowed in some of these areas, I guess. I'm just, have a little problem of keep adding more and more stuff on to it that's outside of, they're following the code, and now we're saying, well, you're following the code. We don't like that you're following the code, so we want to treat you like, you know, you have greater than six acres when you don't, and so particularly when, if they're not here, I guess I'm hesitant to want to put any more restrictions on what's already on the code without getting, you know, the applicant saying that, that they're okay with it. If you look, you have the zoning close by, and I know there's some houses a half mile away, but we have to be very careful of, I guess, how many requirements we put on people if they're trying to follow the code, so those are my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
I understand your concerns, and really, I hope that the applicant would have been here, because it would have been very easy to say, do you agree with what I'd like to do, and they say yes, and we could move forward. Unfortunately, because they chose not to be here today, why, I can't ask those questions of the applicant. All I can do is look at the fact that they own all the property out there, but they chose to just zone enough, almost to the limit of the property, to keep it under the requirement of six acres. So that gives me pause. If they'd have just gone a little bit further north or a little bit further west on this, why, what I'm asking to happen would have happened no matter what. So I don't see that we're adding an undue burden on them when they would have had an opportunity to come and speak to me today and answer my questions, and possibly, we could have just worked it out at this point in time. But all I'm asking is just to add a step so that we can ensure that some of these things that I read off don't happen in that piece of property. One step, so that it can come back to us and for us to take a look at it and make sure that we are protecting the homeowners that live just to the south there, across that dirt road, and to the west. So I don't know that this is an onerous addition to what the regulations say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. My comment should be is that I want to be very sensitive to increasing regulation over regulation. I'm in favor of fewer regulations. I also stated repeatedly that I'm in favor of property rights, of someone being able to do with their ground what they want to do. However, I am persuaded by Commissioner Dennis's comments, and I believe that I'll be in support of, be in support of the motion. Mr. Counselor, do we have to itemize any parts of the Golden?
Well, I was just going to suggest, if we would like to hear from the applicant, I suppose we could pass this over. I don't think there's any problem with the majority of the commission asking to delay the vote or to pass this item over. If you don't wish to do that, you certainly don't have to do that. It's your decision to make.
So you're suggesting if we wanted to, we could just make this a deferral?
If you wanted to do that, to hear from the applicant and ask those questions of that person.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, do we know whether MAPC actually had any discussion about putting limitations on land use? Is one of our options here, I see in front of us, it would be to send it back to MAPC, so they may consider adding condition that any future development plan to this property would have to be reviewed or approved by the governing body. Did they consider that option yet, or was that something they've talked about already?
It was discussed as part of their deliberation.
And they chose not to do this, and it was passed by 12 to 0 vote?
Yes. I mean, in general. I mean, there were commissioners that were saying that they were used to seeing more detail, but they understood it was under six acres. There were other commissioners saying, yeah, but they own it, so we should have seen it. It's kind of similar to what you've seen here.
Was the applicant there during that discussion, do you know?
The agent certainly was.
Okay, was there any discussion between the agent and the commission on whether that would be something they would be willing to support?
Well, he said he was satisfied with the requirement of them submitting the development plan to the Planning Commission. There was no discussion about whether the governing body would be required to review that or eliminating specific uses or those sorts of discussions, that sort of detail.
Well, the options that have been listed here, as potential motions here, I guess, I don't see a point in sending it back to MAPC if they've already had that discussion, but I would be willing to say we don't need to rush at this, because if we can take a little bit of time to give ourselves a chance to understand it from the applicant's perspective, if he supports this. I mean, it would be a small delay, but I would prefer to do that if possible. I mean, he may be willing to have that discussion here, and I think that having his support or his input on that would be very reasonable.
My comment would be that if you decided to send it back, the Planning Commission would be advised to consider the comments that you made about wishing to have had more detail, and that they would have to factor that in for whatever that's worth.
Well, I'm inclined to, want to have that discussion somewhere, whether here or there. If it's appropriate to be there, then that would be something I'd be willing to support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that there's a rush on this. I would like to hear from the applicant. That's why I was hoping that they would be here today. I don't, I know that we've had one homeowner that took off to come up here today, but I don't see that there's a problem with delaying this so that we can hear from the applicant, because I need answers to these questions. That's why the first question I asked was, was the applicant or agent was here? So if it would please the commissioners more to delay this, I'd be happy to amend my motion to allow this to be deferred for 30 days and bring it back before the commission at that time.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, let me say, I prefer that we vote today to approve. Let's keep in mind that we've set rules for our constituents. We've put them in writing, said, here's the rules. Follow these rules, and you can use your land. They went through the process that are in the rules, and they got approved, and they're here. I think they have a right to reasonable expectation that we will follow those rules, and that when we say that if you do this process, you can use your land and these uses under this category if you follow the process in the head. Would it be nice if they were here today? Yes, but I'm not sure, should be required for them to be here to ensure that we follow the rules. Now, I understand you could say that maybe they intentionally went a little below six acres. I say, well, maybe they did, so what? I mean, when government creates regulation that impedes progress and economic development, people look for ways to minimize the impact of those and cost of the rules and regulations. But we have said in our rules and regulations, our zoning code, that if you're less than six acres, this is what you can do, and we've already put more requirements on them than are required in our rules. So I would prefer that we approve this and not delay it any further. I think that's the, I mean, more business-friendly way to do it. If we think our zoning codes allow for certain things that shouldn't be allowed in, then perhaps we should reconsider that, but I would just caution, I encourage my commissioners to think about the person who's owning this property and the business owner and says, sees the rules put for him, before him or her, by the government, said, follow these rules, you can do this, and they went through that process. All of these sorts of issues were available for discussion at that time, and now we're saying, well, maybe we don't like the fact that you use the rules, we think maybe you use the rules. Basically, we're complaining that they followed the rules, and now we don't want to necessarily follow the rules. So I do support this zoning change. I wouldn't be open to adding more requirements, and I would encourage some of the commissioners, 30 days is another 30 days. I don't know if they have anything planned or not, it may not matter in the long run, but I just think, you know, we need to be cautious and respectful of the fact that we've established rules, and I think our constituents ought to be able to have confidence that we will, in general, follow those rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion that's before us at this time, however, says that we are approving the zone change, but that we have added a condition to it.
That's a-
And that is, we want to have some insight as to what's going in there. And so this discussion and conflict could have been avoided if the applicant would have indicated what he's going to put in there, even if it was 5.73 acres. We could have got through this, if we didn't know what he's planning to put in there. I mean, wouldn't that have been a solution?
More detail would have enabled everybody to react in a different way, I suspect. But yes, the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to approve it, subject to there being a development plan that the Board of County Commissioners reviews after there's public notice to the neighbors that the plan has been submitted and Plan Commission and County Commission review.
Okay. Can you say that again?
That the motion is that the application be approved, subject to the Board of County Commissioners approving and reviewing and approving the ultimate development plan, and as part of that, we would send notice to the neighbors, and it would go to Plan Commission, almost like a repeat of the process. The only thing that would be up would be the development plan, not the zoning.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Whatever limitations are agreeable by the agent or applicant, if they would choose to transfer that property or sell that property to somebody else, those conditions would transfer to the new owner, is that correct?
Yes, the restrictions run with the land.
Okay. I understand that's the motion, but there is a subsequent motion that hasn't been seconded yet, is that correct? That would be the delay. I'm not sure you made that-
I haven't made that motion yet.
Oh, I thought you did. Okay. With respect to Commissioner Ranzau's comments, I'm sympathetic to that position, but I would say there's not a timetable attached to those rights. I think we can take our time at some of these things, and it's not wrong to have a conversation with the applicant if they're willing to put some conditions on that, would make people feel better. I would like to have that conversation. Doesn't mean we're taking his rights away, but I think that having the conversation, it would put those things in place. Maybe they don't have any interest in having a tavern or a sexually oriented business out there. If that was the case, maybe they'd be willing to write some of those things into their restrictions and accept those things, and so that it would help people in the community feel better, perhaps, that they know at least a little bit about what is not going to happen in their community. So I think it'd be reasonable for us to take a little time to have that conversation still. It doesn't mean we're stripping his rights, it just simply says we'd like to protect people and do it in a way that the person that's making the application would be willing to put some things in place to help the community, perhaps, feel a little bit more at ease over what the plans would be in the future. So I'm still inclined to want to see a delay on this. I'm acceptable, I would accept the motion as you described it, I guess, but my intent would be to try to find a way to have that conversation with the agent and have him put up, you know, I guess willingly accept some things that he would be willing to say are restrictions he's acceptable to, and that would put the community at ease a little bit over the things that aren't going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other comment? I believe then that we have a motion and a second that needs to be dealt with. I see no one else asking. I see no one else asking to speak, so, Madam Clerk, we'll ask you to call the vote, please. Excuse me, I don't, before we do that, is there, Mr. Counselor, are there other legal considerations?
Hello, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. I was just going to let you know that, and this may have been apparent, but in order to take the action proposed in the motion, it would require four votes to take that action.
We have that notation, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comment? All right, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Item G, Zone Change From SF-20 Single Family Residential To TF-3 Two-Family Residential On Property Generally Located On The South Side Of West 47th Street South And Approximately 500 Feet West Of South Meridian Avenue.
Dale Miller, Plan staff again. This is 38 unplatted acres. The applicant proposes to develop the property with a mix of single-family and duplex units. At the Planning Commission meeting, he indicated they expected 80% of the site to be developed as single-family. However, they are asking for the TF-3 zoning to allow for the duplexes. There was, as you can see, there is manufactured home zoning to the east and to the south, and when we get to the aerial, you'll see that some of it's developed and some of it is not. To the west is a single-family zoned SF-5 subdivision, and then to the north are other SF-20 properties, primarily large lot residential uses. And this is west 47th Street here, with Meridian over here. There's the aerial, these aerials are about three years old, they're the most recent that we have. You can see the manufactured home subdivision or park over here, it's vacant down here, and then it wraps around to the south. This is the single-family subdivision immediately to the west. It is hard to see, but there is a significant drainage ditch that runs the entire length that separates the application area from the existing residential area. There is also one on the east side, and this is also a drainage ditch, and these carry water down to this larger ditch, and then it carries it on further south. And you can see here, large lot residential uses to the north. There were a number of people that spoke in opposition, primarily concerned with the notion that duplex zoning equals rental properties, and that rental properties equal lower maintenance than homeowner-occupied properties. There was a couple of folks that mentioned that they thought rental properties would lead to transient folks that could increase the level of crime. There was also discussion about development at the duplex level with increased traffic on 47th Street. I think those are the, and then drainage was the other issue that was brought up. Planning Commission did review this and approved it, only what they did was they limited the TF-3 zoning to the eastern half instead of the entire site. And so, when the property is annexed, the SF-20 zoning that would remain, if this is approved, as recommended, the property on the western half would remain zoned SF-20, and then when it gets annexed, upon annexation, it automatically convert to single-family five that would allow the single-family homes, and then if this is approved, the zone change would then allow for the duplexes to be on the east half and restrict them to the east half of the property away from the neighbors who felt that duplexes in close proximity to their homes would impact them. So, with that, I try and answer questions.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Miller? Then once again, this is a zone change, it's not a public hearing, but on zone changes, we allow public input, but if there is anyone who wants to speak. I see no one rising to speak, so we'll restrict the comments back to the bench, and Commissioners, if there are no comments, what's the will of the board?
Sir Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve the zone change, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Dale. Next item, please.
Item H, Presentation Of The Quarterly Financial Report.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. As we have Rick come up and give the quarterly report, I wanted to take the opportunity in reference to the budget and specifically the CAFR to deliver you some news that we received from the Governate Finance Officers Association. So, Rick, through his leadership and the team of finance, received an award, and I wanted to read it to you from the GFOA. The Certificate Of Achievement For Excellence In Financial Reporting Has Been Awarded To Sedgwick County By The Government Finance Officers Association Of The United States And Canada For Its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or better known as the CAFR. The Certificate Of Achievement Is The Highest Form Of Recognition In The Area Of Governmental Accounting And Financial Reporting, And Its Attainment Represents A Significant Accomplishment By A Government And Its Management. An Award Of Financial Reporting Achievement Has Been Awarded To The Individual Or Department Designated By The Government As Primarily Responsible For Preparing The Award-Winning CAFR. The CAFR Has Been Judged By An Impartial Panel To Meet The Highest Standards Of The Program, Which Includes Demonstrating A Constructive Spirit Of Full Disclosure To Clearly Communicate Its Financial Story And Motivate Potential Users And User Groups To Read The CAFR. So, again, through Rick's leadership and a team effort in the Finance Department, this is a pretty big deal, and I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly recognize them. And with that, they were able to be given a bunch of, I think we have plaques that they were given, with this nice plaque that they will proudly display in their department. But I want to give Rick an opportunity to recognize the team that helped him in this.
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
Never had an introduction before a quarterly report. I thank you very much. Before I go into the quarterly report, allow me to recognize the team that's responsible for this, because this most certainly is a team award for the Accounting Department, particularly, who's represented here? There they are, right there. The Accounting Department's sitting here in the back row very quietly. The director is Hope Fernandez, next to her is Melissa Slaughter, next to her is Mandy Estes. Sitting over here, hiding behind the Budget Team is Marty Hughes, and did I miss, sorry, and Brandy Bailey, sitting there with the Budget Team. So, those are the people that are responsible for putting the CAFR together. So, once again, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, for bringing light to that, but it's very much a team award, and that's the team responsible for that. So, thank you all very much. And as the presentation is being handed out to you, so you know, what you're about to see here is obviously our standard quarterly report. At the end of each quarter, the Division of Finance does report on the financial condition of the county. So, the following report will be a report as what our financial condition is at the end of the third quarter, the third fiscal quarter, which ended September 30th this year. But the information contained in this report is based on the unaudited financial statements and would exclude any adjustments that will be necessary in the future. So, the first section of the report that you should have received yesterday, so you have received the report, the first section of our report outlines financial information on a budgetary basis for applicable fund types, and that includes comparisons to financial activities with the previous fiscal year and the adopted and revised budgets. The second section of the report outlines financial status of active capital projects. The final section of the report is the fund statements, which provides a broad overview of the county's finances in a manner similar to a private sector business, and that's based on GAAP standards. And this report, again, is prepared by this team behind me, the Budget Team, which is led by Lorian Schowalter-Ary, and they're represented here by, well, I tell you what, this is a test. It's what this is. Carly Sanchez, Lee McCray, Todd Kowawa, Brandon is not here today, and then the accounting staff, which you already met. But that's the team responsible for putting this report together every quarter. I'm just the guy that gets to stand up here, and I'm the pretty face.
We're in trouble.
I was hoping that wouldn't be said this time.
It just, it needs to be said.
Okay.
So, when we report the financial status, the county typically aggregates the information to one of several possible groupings. The General Fund, Property Tax Supported Funds, Other Operating Funds, or All Operating Funds, and what we're going to start with is this chart that details projections to year-end by those groupings. And we'll start the very first there to the left. The General Fund is the county's primary operating fund, and it accounts for county services that don't have a designated fund of their own. And that includes most general government law enforcement functions, and it receives the broadest variety of revenues. Currently, the operations of 42 divisions are funded from the General Fund, and the revenues are projected to exceed expenditures, and there'll be a change in fund balance projected at $994,000, and that will result in an ending fund balance of $63.5 million. So, you can see how I'm going down the chart, I'm just going to run down revenues, expenditures, there's a net transfer line, or I mean, a net change in fund balance line, that was the $994,000, and then the ending fund balance will be the bottom line. So, as we move to the right, the county has seven other property tax-supported funds, including bond and interest, EMS, com care, aging, highway, noxious weeds, and Wichita State. Each fund provides services related to a specific function, and the property taxes levied in each fund are used only to support those specific functions. So, the first of those is our debt service fund. Expenditures are projected to be more than revenues, so we see a projected change in the fund balance of $204,000, resulting in an ending fund balance of roughly $3 million. And then we move to the right, the other tax-supported funds, those ones I listed prior, has a net change in fund balance of just over $3.9 million, and mostly this is due to $4 million in transfers to other funds. But again, the ending fund balance is just over $4 million. Moving now to non-property tax funds, the county has 31 budgeted other operating funds, which are not supported directly with property taxes, and those include grant funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. These funds are estimated to decrease by approximately $1.1 million in combined fund balance, and will have an ending fund balance of $29.8 million. Next, the Fire District. The Fire District, number one, is a distinct government entity that is operated as part of the Sedgwick County Government and levies property taxes, but is reported separately. The projected change in fund balance in the Fire District Fund is $725,000, and results in an ending fund balance of $4.75 million. And then the next column is our Enterprise And Internal Service Funds, and you see a net change in fund balance of $1.4 million, ending fund balance of $34.1 million. So, references, so as we move to the very far right column, we call total operating funds. References to operating funds means the property tax-supported funds plus all other funds, so taking all of those columns into account, the operating fund of the county is projected to have an ending fund balance of $139.4 million. So now, we're going to go, and we're going to look at just county property tax-supported funds. The third quarter net revenues represented here were $214.3 million. There were increases in property tax of $3.2 million, licenses and permits of $5.6 million, mainly from MABCD. So, the county property tax-supported funds, this is general funds plus all other property tax-supported funds, had revenues through the third quarter of $214.3 million. Here are the expenditures of the county property tax-supported funds, and at the end of the third quarter, we had expenditures that totaled $191.7 million, and the bulk of those increases are personnel costs, and that's due to the month of September having three payroll postings as opposed to last year. So, here's the percentage change in revenue and expenditures, so a 4.8% increase in revenue and a 5.5% increase in expenditures. If we take that, one more slide for county property tax-supported funds, this shows our net income through the third quarter of $22.6 million. Here we show the top 10 revenues in those property tax-supported funds. And again, you see the increase in adwarem taxes at 2.6%. Sales and use taxes see a slight decrease over last year, and again, we're comparing point in time, third quarter 2016 to third quarter 2017, so it's a year-over-year comparison. Motor vehicle taxes show a slight increase of 1.9%. And then the huge percentage there in the miscellaneous non-business license or permits is the MABCD revenue, which we are now the managing partner, so that was zero, so that shows that. So, as we move down the chart, you can see that there are some relative high percentage changes in Medicare fees, but the dollar amounts are relatively small. Coming down, all revenues, including transfers, again, $214 million. That dollar change is $9 million, or 4.8% increase. Now, we look at key personnel expenditures. If I can, let me back up one real quick. What's not shown on this chart may be as significant as what is shown on that chart. And what you're not seeing on this top 10 revenues anymore is mortgage registration fees. Mortgage registration fees is no longer a top 10 revenue in this fund or in this category. But we knew that was coming, because as they phase out the mortgage registration fees, which will go away in 2019, okay, so it's important to note that it's not a top 10 anymore. What we're seeing is an increase in officer fees. Yes, sir, question?
Excuse me, Rick, but the mortgage registration fees were a top 10, and what level were they approximately?
Well...
Was it $3 or $4 million?
Yeah, I have the numbers right here. Last year, at this point in time, mortgage registration fees would have been $3.14 million, so that would have put it about number eight on the list. This year, they're at $2.23 million, so that's a decrease of $90,000. Then officer fees, conversely, so we're seeing an increase in that. In 2016, the officer fees were at $1.87 million. This year, they're at $2.39 million, so that's an increase of $52,000. So, the decrease of the mortgage registration fees is obviously outpacing the increase that we're seeing in officer fees, but there is some balance there. But I just think it's important to bring to your attention, because that program will phase out completely in 2019.
Okay, but we have an estimation of what the net impact of that change is, and what will it be?
Okay. Okay. Got it. I've just been told that at the height, mortgage registration fees were about $7 million, and the projection for officer fees will be about $4 million.
Okay, so we have a net impact of about $3 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Nope, don't apologize. Thank you. So, sorry... So, sorry to go off track there, but it just seemed important to bring to light. So here, what we have is key personnel expenditures in the county property tax-supported funds. And again, personnel is the largest single category of expense that we incur at the county. The 10.5% increase that you see on the salary and wages line, and the 10.2% increase you see on the other line is, again, we had three payroll postings in 2017 in September as opposed to 2016. So that accounts for the large percentage increases on that line, also on the FICA line, and then that will account for the 9.4% increase you see in all personnel expenditures. On this slide, we list some of the key non-personnel expenditures in the county property tax-supported funds. And you can see that on this, this, this will be, non-personal expenditures would be grant awards, payments to Exploration Place, WATC, Wichita State mill levy, the Extension Council payments. And what you see is on, on the grant awards, the first line there, that is due to contractual in aging and comp care. You'll also see there is a slight increase in fleet management charges, and that is for some vehicle purchases that have been reported since the first quarter. And then the software and hardware maintenance also shows a percentage increase, or that's a decrease, rather, and that was also from the first quarter. We now shift from tax-supported funds to non-tax. And again, the county has 31 operating funds, which are not supported with property taxes. And in these non-tax special revenue funds, those are down in the third quarter from '16 to '17, and the majority of that decrease is attributable to the Affordable Airfares Here are the expenditures. Again, you see a slight uptick there from $52.7 in 2016 to $55 million in 2017. Once again, that slight uptick is due to the three payroll postings that we have in Here's the percent changes. You see there's a 13% decrease in the revenue and an 8.2% increase in expenditures. And we look at some of the top 10 revenues here. And again, you, so you see, there's a lot of red there, there's a lot of decreases in Here are the key expenditures in the non-tax special revenue funds. So now we're going to move away from the budgetary statements into what the second part of the quarterly presentation is, and that's the part that's behind, if you look at the report, it's behind the fund statement tab. And what this chart shows is five years of historical trends plus the current year of our total fund balance on a GAAP basis. So as you can see, the third quarter numbers are represented by the red numbers and the red data points. You can see that they fall into a very narrow range over the last five years in our current year, and there's a clear pattern, obviously, of when taxes are collected, and then as we spend them down. This is the same data, represented differently, but on a percentage basis. So what we're trying to show here is, the county has a fund balance policy that states that unrestricted general fund balance has to be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. So again, not unlike the previous slide, you see the clear pattern, third quarter numbers represented in red, and then the, that 20% line is highlighted down below, so you can see our unrestricted balance falls above that policy minimum. But we watch that mostly in the fourth quarter as we spend down. Now we'll take a look at the investment portfolio, so we'll move away from the GAAP portion of the briefing. So the, so what we notice here is that in the blue line represents the county's yield. That's what we're drawing right now in our investments, and that number is 1.01%. The green line, that dotted line that posts above that is the benchmark, what we measure ourselves by, which is one-year T-bills, which right now are drawing 1.31%. The brown bars, as you can see through, that's the par amount of our total investments, which right now are at $208 million. So what you see is, we're chasing the benchmark a bit. As the Fed increases the rate, we have investments already tied up that we, as they mature, we'll be able to reinvest those at a higher rate. So right now, we're chasing the benchmark a bit. But I think, all in all, I'm going to, I'm going to mention another member of my team now, Brandy Bailey manages our investment portfolio, and I think she does a really good job at doing that. So now we move to another section of the quarterly report, which is significant capital projects. There's a complete list in your quarterly to go into the depth, but these are some of the significant ones that we highlight for you. Starting at the top, obviously, the Ronald Reagan Building, and we see the budget, the amount committed, and that is on schedule to be completed in November. That's this month. Second, Law Enforcement Training Center. That budget is $6.13 million. We showed a commitment number there, and that construction is to be completed on December 1st of 2017. We next see the construction of EMS Northeast Post. The design was recently awarded, and then construction will be underway shortly. The entrance C remodel at Intrust Bank Arena, obviously, construction is underway, but, and will be completed this month. And then the last is R-175 preventive maintenance to road projects, and there are seven projects in 2017, including crack sealing, overlays, seals, pavement recycling, covering 215 miles of roads, and the zoo parking lots. This slide shows a leading economic indicators, as presented from the Center of Economic Development and Business Research from Wichita State. And what this shows is just those lead, those leading economic indicators, and you can see as, that while over, if you look from 2008, obviously, with that huge downfall there, then as we climb out, as you concentrate on the last part, you see a, there's a small down, or a decrease there. But actually, that only represents, if I were to zero in on that chart, it only represents tenths of a point, so it's very, very small. Here we look at some of the key metrics for Sedgwick County, or a lot of times, this is from the Wichita area, and these are also taken from various agencies. It's information that I get from the Appraiser's Office, from CEDBR. So as you can see, that the long-term trends that we see, and this is annualized data through 2016, the long-term trends in the tax base is up, home sales up, new home permits up, mortgages registered, and then, of course, the sales and use tax is 2016 data, and as I showed you earlier, there's a slight decrease in that this year. So if we look at the same, the same data, but we compare them from what, the third quarter of 2016 to the third quarter of 2017, you'll see those arrows are actually the other way around. Home sales are down from that third quarter, new home permits are down from that third quarter, mortgages registered, sales and use tax, as I showed earlier in a previous slide, slightly down. However, the employment numbers are, total employed is up, and our unemployment numbers locally are down. So here, what we see is some of the potential threats. Obviously, the federal budget would be a potential threat to the county, and as it, as it pertains to grant funding. The state budget, the unknown of the school funding, and again, our local economy seems to have a slower rate of recovery than nationally. However, in addition to these political and economic threats, there are other threats that we need to be concerned of here at the county, and we see cyber threats, phishing attempts against the county, and as the different divisions and departments go through, and they conduct SWAT analysis, risk assessments, audits, policy and procedure reviews, we tighten our internal controls, but many of our county's systems are in need of upgrade. So many divisions and departments throughout the county conduct their own internal control reviews, and they identify the need for systems upgrades. You've seen some of these in the 2018 budget, you've heard of others through forecasts in our presentations at staff meetings. So I think going forward, that, that's one of the things that we need to keep an eye on as a threat that isn't necessarily political or economic, but it's an environmental threat that we try to keep an eye, our eye on. So key points from the report is that there is no deficit projected in the general fund in FY 2017. We do see increasing reliance on taxes to fund the government, and we discuss the loss of the mortgage registration fee revenues. And our county focus reflects emphasis on core services to reduce funding to government services that can be provided by other government or private entities. So the third quarter financial performance is consistent with what we expected. Our fundamentals continue to reflect strong financial position, no projected deficit, and we continue to use a strategic plan as a roadmap for our success. And with that, I would stand for any questions you might have. But I'm, probably was so thorough in my report that there shouldn't be any questions from the bench today. And I know I just set myself up for that.
I know she turned the screen off, so I... We do have a question from Commissioner O'Donnell.
It was very thorough, it was very good, probably the best I've ever seen. But my question is, on slide 22, you have the, the economy, the, the key metrics. Where do you receive that information about unemployed?
That is from the, if you go to the CEDBR website at Wichita State...
Okay.
And you click on data, it's a chart that gives employment data. It gives it for all of the area, the regions in the state. It gives Topeka area, Wichita area, Kansas City, so that's where I get that from.
Yeah, I knew we were the highest, but it shows here 9.2%.
Right.
Yeah, I know we had speakers at the beginning of the meeting saying we didn't need Tyson here because our employment was below five, so I thank you, you're correcting that statement. So, thank you, Rick.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ranzau.
I, I think, just to clarify, that 9%, that's a, that's a 9% change.
That's...
The unemployment rate is 4%.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not an unemployment rate.
Okay.
That is a change... Back to the previous chart.
From, from the third quarter of 2016, so we are in a better position now than we were a year ago.
So what is the total, then?
The total unemployment...
It's on the previous slide.
It's, it's actually, our unemployment rate is actually 4%.
Okay.
But I'll tell you what I'll do, is I'll go pull that data, and I'll send you all what the actual unemployment rate is from the CEDBR.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that question, I needed help understanding that also. And any other comments or questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at slide number 13. Seems like, does, do these columns add up to the numbers at the bottom? All revenues, including transfers, is $58 million in third quarter?
No.
Okay.
No, those are just highlights of top 10 revenues.
I didn't think it added up, that's why I was going to ask, but you know, it talks about dollar changes, $7.6 million over what period of time?
It's year-to-date through the third quarter, comparing '17 to '16.
That seems like a, a very large number.
That's correct.
$6 million difference from year-to-year. Wow, that is, that is concerning. Is, is there any explanation for that, that we, we could understand?
Well, these are non-tax special revenue funds, so many of those can be tied to grants, to grant funding.
We have, we have continued to engage our grant opportunities. I don't remember anything in the last year that's, that we have done that would have changed that from our perspective, I don't think. All right, I just want to, I just want to point that out, I guess, are we doing less services as a result of this, or are we providing less?
We'll do, we'll look at that more closely, and we'll provide you some more data on that.
I mean, if our, if our needs are going down, and we're asking for less money, or they're providing less money because our needs are going down, again, those might be reasons that, that would make sense, but that seems like a very large number, then I guess if that, if that's going to continue, then that needs to be something we, we would track very closely.
Okay. A reminder, $4 million of that, in excess of $4 million of that is Affordable Airfares funding.
Okay, well, that helps, all right.
Thank you.
That, that's great, thank you for that explanation. And then likewise, I guess, the same thing, I had one other question on slide number 12. Year-over-year, again, so if I interpret that chart correctly, our revenues are way down, our expenditures are way up.
The 13% revenue also is Affordable Airfares revenue.
All right, that, again, so that's, is still a factor in those, in those charts. All right, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? I think we need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item A, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of October 26, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. There's one item that's a result of our meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on October 26. This item is the 100 megabit point-to-point circuit over fiber for the Law Enforcement Training Center, and this is for the Division of Information Technology and Support Services. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Cox Communications, Kansas, LLC, for one-time installation charge of $1,000, and then a monthly, monthly rate of $1,400 for 36 months, which makes the grand total $51,400. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Commissioners, are there any questions? I will move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrin?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, thank you. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items, Juliet through Yankee.
Still move?
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrin?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, thank you. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items, Juliet through Yankee.
Still move?
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrin?
Aye. And next item, please?
Legislative Issues.
Are there things to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, only to announce that we will have a staff meeting next Tuesday morning, the 7th, to discuss legislative program for the county, and then on November 29th, at your BOCC meeting, we'll probably adopt something in the way of a platform.
All right, thank you very much. Next item.
Other?
Commissioners, are there other things of interest to bring up? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know that I'm fairly involved in high school sports. Be announcing again Friday night, but as I was looking through, of course, there's soccer going on for state, there's volleyball and so forth, but I was looking at the brackets for football, and I noticed just in our county, and some real close to our county, Sedgwick, Douglas, Cheney, the Independent Wichita, Wichita Collegiate, Mulvane, Andover Central, Andale, May's South, Goddard High School, Andover, Goddard-Eisenhower, Bishop Carroll, Cape and May's, Heights, Derby. And finally, the one that I want to talk about briefly, is, all of those that I just mentioned are in the finals, but Friday night, Northwest High School in my district is playing campus Hayesville in Michael O'Donnell's district. And so, just to make it a little more interesting, on Friday night, I'd like to place a little wager with Michael O'Donnell, see if he accepts...
As long as our attorney says it's okay.
Oh, it's very legal, yeah.
But at the next meeting, of course, I want to make sure that I support the Booster Clubs from these two organizations, because they are helping support them going forward. So at the next meeting, why, the loser purchases from the Booster Club a hat from the opposing team, and wears it during the entire meeting next time, except during the invocation and the flag ceremony. So I'm checking to see if you'd be willing to accept that slight wager. Thank you, that's all I have.
I've been here 15 years, we have never done this before. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that sounds like a lot of fun. I remember doing something similar to that up in the State House, and the losing person had to wear the other person's jersey during the meeting, so that was a very similar, it was kind of fun, it turned out okay. But anyway, I would like to raise a, a different issue entirely. I would ask my colleagues to, to consider with me an issue that's going on in our community that I'm very, very concerned about. If you've been watching the news, you've, you've seen a number of stories, it seems like, especially in the last few weeks, on the issue of the opioid epidemic or crisis that's happening in our nation. And having said that, I did some, some research, a little bit, watching, I guess, reading these stories, it's, just, I wanted to reflect on a couple of these things that I think are really very sobering numbers. I'd like to read a little bit of this to my colleagues, and ask for maybe a little bit of action at the end of this. I'd like to make a couple of points, though. Number one, almost 1, almost 1% of our, of our population has an addiction to opioids, and that may not be true for South Central Kansas, but that's, that's the national average. Over 2.4 million people in this country right now have an addiction to opioids. Another one, a number of Americans who died from opioids and, and other drugs in the last year was 64,000 people in 2016. That's 175 people per day that lost their lives to drug addictions. That is nearly twice the number of deaths from motor vehicle crashes. I thought that was very interesting to see that number. Number of drug overdose deaths since 2000 is more than half a million people, and that's nearly 300,000 more than the number of murders involving guns. I, I serve on the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the sheriff, the coroner, WPD, the hospitals, and the judicial system are all talking about this issue, and they're beginning to do some work to, to track this, but as the Board of Health, I think that we ought to be part of that as well. Maybe just a couple, maybe make a couple more points about that in just a second, maybe just a couple more little ones here. Since 1999, it says despite reductions, the amount of opioids prescribed remains approximately three times as high as it was in, in 1999. The peak was in 2010, but despite the fact that we're still three times higher than we were just about 25 years ago. And then, that, by the way, that data is from the CDC, I think that's very interesting. In Kansas, we actually have three parts of our state, the northwest, southwest, and southeast corners are the most saturated with this problem. The more urban areas like Johnson County, South Central Kansas, Sedgwick County, are actually faring a little bit better, and there's been a lot of speculation as to why that is, and although I think that's, that's good, we don't have it as bad as some other parts of the country, or as bad as parts of, other parts of the state, it seems like the problem is ever-moving target, and we ought to be vigilant, I guess, to know what's going on in our community as the Board of Health. In 2015, the most recent year the CDC measured, there was one county in our state that was the 17th highest in the nation. There's, were 3,000 counties in the nation that were polled, 2,820 of those responded with data, and of those 2,820, the 17th highest, highest in the state was Morton County here in Kansas. To me, that was another thing I think we ought to just be aware of. And then, on the national stage, just in the last year, there was 52,000 overdose deaths in this country. 20,000 of those had to do with prescription painkillers. So nationally, about 55 people per day are losing their lives to prescription painkillers. In 2014, in Sedgwick County, there were 160, in 2015, 159, so it's fairly stable. Last year and this year, it's actually a little bit better. Last year was 135, and this year has been, has dropped quite a bit, and I'm not sure what we've done, if anything, that's caused that change. I don't know that we've actually engaged anything that has made that, that difference. With that, with that being said, I guess, I, I would say, as a Board of Health, we ought to actually have a discussion, we can do this in a staff meeting later on perhaps, but I'd like to ask a couple of questions to my colleagues, maybe to other staff that's here. Number one, what can we do, or what should we do, if anything, about what's going on in our community? As far as I know, we've not really engaged this issue, I think maybe we should. And then, secondly, in terms of tracking the issue that's going on, I, I understand that CJCC is starting this process, but again, I think the, the County Board of Health ought to be fully involved, and we ought to see reports given to the, the Board of County Commissioners, for us to, for us to track and know what's going on in our community. And so those are my requests, and with that, I just wanted to make those comments, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just in response to your comments, I'd say that not, not as a, an effort to get in front of it so much, but as a response to the growing needs in our community, Sheriff Easter is chairing a group of folks that include the key stakeholders, including Community Crisis Center and Calm Care, both hospitals, city police, folks from WSU, the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, and these folks have been meeting on several occasions already, trying to respond to what we recognize is a potential crisis in our community, and as the chair, as the sheriff says, you know, we already have it, and it's going to get worse. And that group's working at least in a response to it, and of course, we all know the solutions to get in front of it, and that's a little more difficult, so. But at any rate, appreciate your comments, and we do need to pay attention to that.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Kiewes, County Counselor, in response to your comments and Commissioner Howell's request, I can reach out to counsel on the legal side. I believe that there is an effort underway to form some national litigation about this related to conduct of the manufacturers of opioids, and maybe bring to you in about a week, something related to whether or not we want to join in a lawsuit for that, if that is all right with you.
Thank you, appreciate that. That's an effort to get on the front side of it, and that's the ultimate solution, so.
Well, at least conceivably, it would provide us with some funding to take care of some of the programs that you just discussed, and, and the needs that you've raised, Commissioner Howell, so. So I can maybe have that to you in about a week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Counselor. Any, any other, other? All right, I think we, are going to have an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the executive session, and we do have a need for that, I'm told that we ought to have an off-agenda item during this section related to moving the meeting time next week from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The, the law does require that a majority of the commission agree to that, and I would ask that you take up an off-agenda item to that effect. We don't need a resolution to do that, simply say that we're going to move the, the meeting from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and have a regular agenda at that time.
All right, well, thank you for, for keeping us in bounds, and I would move that we take an off-agenda item.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And that off-agenda item would be the cancellation of the November 8, 2017 regular meeting, and setting a special meeting of the County Commissioners for 2:00 PM on November 8, 2017. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And just as a point of discussion, that's so the commission and many of our staff can attend the JROTC program over at the Brick Brown Arena, is that where it's supposed to be?
It's at Century 2.
Century 2, all right. Commissioners, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And thank you for keeping us in bounds. Now I think we need to have motion for executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed an executive session for 30 minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel required to protect privacy interests of an identifiable individual, and to consult with attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege in the public interest, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this executive session no sooner than 11:45.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. We are now adjourned, recessed, we are now recessed to executive session.
Actually, we're going to go back to your conference.
Is there a regular?
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county's